Okay, Water Service Callie.
We're going to have a presentation.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to do a presentation in summary of my Public Utilities Board submission for the water and sewer rates. So I will bore you with this whole binder. I'll just let you know it does take a lot of work to determine the rates and make sure that they aren't there under representative for the town of Niwa and keeps the water and sewer sustainable. Don't forget to stay here if your child can't hear. Can you see that? Yes, one's dark. If we turn the lights on, we'd be able to... Give it a go, Steve. Is that better? So this is to set the rates for 2023 to '25 for the water and sewer infrastructure for the town of Niwa. And this process actually is very lengthy, hence submitting it in June. Anticipating it to be back and ready for January is very optimistic, although the modest increase we're looking for, we proposed that maybe we would get a favorable review from the Public Utilities Board. I also know, though, that when you send things to the Public Utilities Board, you don't get in there in favor of your better application. You have to sit in the queue. So we'll see where we get with it because the last time we submitted, we were in the queue for two years, maybe? But we also went over and came through a lot of hurdles at that particular time, having had to meet the public sector accounting board standards and also phloxing our rates from a four-step rate to a two-step rate. So the rates were last revised in 2017 by the Public Utilities Board Order 15/17 and Utility Rate Bio-Law Number 3145. In PUB Order 15/17, they supported phloxing four-step rate structure to a two-step rate structure for water and a single-step rate structure for sewer. We also came into compliance with the Public Sector Accounting Board standards for the inclusion of amortization expense for capital assets and the amortization of grant funding. Those are requirements that the municipality has to meet now. So that particular PUB order covered the period of July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2020, and there has not been a change to date. Partially, the decision made in-house for the fact that we were not running deficits and we also were going through COVID. So because we weren't running deficits and we were fairly successful in sustaining the utility, a decision was made to take the time post-COVID, or at least at the end, to begin our application in for 2023 to 2025. So talk a little bit about the utility system, give people an idea of what it means. We draw our water from the Assitaboyne Delta Aquifer by way of Hummersden well site. It actually has three wells at that site, 24 kilometers southeast of Niwa. And we also have a second well site at Oberon. There's two wells at that site, and it's 19 kilometers south of Niwa. We have an operating license, and it's based on a Class 3 water treatment plant and Class 2 water distribution. Our treated water is stored, at least up to this point, in ground at two reservoirs at the plant. We have a storage vault of 1,257 cubic meters of water. We also can store 2,180 cubic meters of water at the water tower. Right now, as we all know, we were trying to complete our reservoirs, nearing completion, and that will increase our storage by another 2,800 cubic meters of water. So roughly, by the time we're done, we may have 6,237 cubic meters of water stored, which would be almost doubling what we have before the reservoir. Customers projected for 2022, we're looking at having about 1,526 water and sewer customers, 55 water-only, total customer base of 1,581. For 2021, we actually had about 1,550. So we're projecting with the new homes and whatnot going out, we're going to add at least 31 more customers. And then just for interest, and I think there was a little posting on our website one time to see if people could guess how many fire hydrants we service. We actually service 209. We will be adding more as we grow and increase the housing. Talk a little bit about the sewer system now. You see a little toilets there. Sewerage is collected by way of gravity and pumped through five lift stations all by the town. But we also have four additional lift stations under private ownership that pump to our system. So up until 2021, the town's system emptied into a facultative three-cell lagoon system with one primary and two secondary lagoon cells. As per our licensing requirements, treated effluent is discharged annually into the Whiteland River. Given the age of the lagoon cells and the lack of space for expansion, the town began in 2016 to pursue a design that would incorporate mechanical treatment aspects to reduce footprint size. The new treatment design will allow for treated effluent to be continually discharged as opposed to an annual storage and discharge process. So this kind of gives you a little idea of what we're looking at. The picture in the middle at right at the top shows you the cells that we have. We have three of them, take up quite a large area. When we went to work on a mechanical design, we're actually going to be able to get rid of the cells on the exterior, and we're going to repurpose the one in the middle. So the picture at the bottom, even though you can still see a large water body at the top of the picture, the idea is the area that's been renovated in the bottom of the picture is more of what we're going to adapt to our use and run the water in through a system to a building that will treat it and narrate it and whatnot and send it out more mechanically into the Whiteland David's. So Phase 1 of the project, which we did complete, it was following a pilot project that we completed in the winter of 2016-17. The pilot proved very, very successful, and we decided to go to a full-scale design. And it's called Moving Bed Biofilm Reactor System, and it will represent the first of its kind in Manitoba and Western Canada. So we're quite excited to proceed to Phase 2 this year. So Phase 1 involved relocation of the first secondary lagoon cell with a nuclear liner and berms, as well as the construction of the treatment facility. Phase 2, which we're starting to work on, hopefully go to tender very shortly, will complement Phase 1. It will implement the full MBVR system and the decommissioning of the primary and secondary facultative cells. Aeration will be installed in the re-formatted main cell, as well as the addition of ultraviolet components for wastewater treatment. Sludge removal will be completed to clean up the decommissioned cells to enable their repurposing for stormwater retention and controll site. And as spoken a few years ago, we actually proceeded into the bylaw stage for a possible debenture on this project for Phase 2, and that was approved and it's in place for if we have to actually proceed to a particular water stage. So when we look at what we do for water in Niwa, I think a lot of people get confused about how we sell water. We actually sell water here by the cubic meter. And what does a cubic meter of water mean? Basically, if you go down a few bullets, it means a pool of 1,000 liters of water. So if you took a one-liter bottle of water, that you might drink several of daily, a cubic meter of water is 1,000 of those. You can also take and equate a cubic meter of water to mean you could take 13 baths with a full tub, you can do 14 loads of laundry, you can take 28 showers, you can flush your toilet 111 times, unless, of course, it has a leak, and then you flush a lot less. And you could probably even make or drink, you know, 1,759 pints of beer. So it's a fair amount of water. So once you understand how much water a cubic meter is, we actually sell our water in cubic meters in Niwa. So when we do our domestic water sales, we sell 354,576 cubic meters of water. So that's 30.28% of our water. If you look at the wholesale rate, 59.51% of those wholesale, 696,932 cubic meters. Bulk water at the plant, 2,978 cubic meters. When we do firefighting or line flushing or anything particularly involving the town, could be watering the cemetery, we meter all of that. Comes up to 53,885 cubic meters, or 4.6%. So all of the water that we sell and can actually account for is over a million. What we cannot account for, though, is 62,706 cubic meters of water. And those sometimes quite often are leaks or mean something that's not tracked. So that's 5.35% of our water. The Public Utilities Board standard is 10%. Anything greater than 10%, you really have to take some time and delve into why, what's gone wrong. If you've got aging infrastructure or you're not tracking something. So we are well within the limits allowed by the Public Utilities Board for mature utility. This is just a graphic, it's showing you the numbers you see in the previous chart based on what it looks like, you know, if you had a pie and sliced it up and where the water went. So it was just more of a visual. This next chart talks to you about, though, of the water that we can account for, we return to the sewer, 33.76% of our water. That's all. 66% of our water does not go back to the sewer. So those numbers are very important when you start looking at how you're going to pay for the production of your water, the distribution of your water, and who's going to pay for the sewer for those costs as part of the added on to those that have sewer as part of their charges. Not return to the sewer, that large number also would include places like High Life, for example, who are a majority of our water users, but they return their water to a sewer. They don't return it to our sewer, though. They return it to their own plant homes, R3, in the divisions. So which is kind of an interesting fact, to see where the water is. When doing an application, you also look at your capital projects. So to build in your costs and how you'd be sustainable, you have to make sure that you can cover your operating, you know, your supplies, your equipment, your capital projects. So 2022, even though my rates will be based on '23 to '25, just to give you an idea of things we're currently working on, is the Water Reservoir Fund by Reserving Grant. We still are going to portion about 2.2 million to that project. We have launched ourselves into a water supply study. It's going to be around about $90,000 cost share with the Water Services Board because, as we all know, drought conditions hit, and we can't always guarantee the aquifer is going to have the supply we need. The lagoon upgrades for Phase 2, even though we might spend upwards of $6 million, we're portioning that across the next two years to make sure that we can fund that. So it will be paid through by borrowing and for grants. And of course, we do annual water treatment plan upgrades, looking at about $200,000 to make sure it's operating. We also do a five-year plan, looking at, this would be specifically more projects '23 to '27. And of course, we would be finishing up our lagoon upgrades for Phase 2, so we would be spending another $1.7 million. We're going to do $200,000 in each of those years for water and sewer renewals and water treatment plant upgrades. We're looking at actually at the completion of our water supply study. We're actually looking at having a third site in addition to Hummersden and Oberon, so that should we need to have one particular well site offline, we have an extra for backup and we should have a constant supply. So about $2 million, we're targeting for the year 2025 approximately. We're looking at installing a meter bit at the High Life boundary just for better tracking as they grow and we grow, just better information. We're going to also prepare to look at the relocation of the Mill Street Lift Station. So targeting, that might be a two-year project, depending on when that happens. And I guess the importance of that one was when we flooded in 2020, we understood that Mill Street Lift Station was older. It was actually in risk of flood. We had to do mitigative measures to make sure it didn't flood. So we think by moving it out of the location it's on aesthetically, it'll also be in a better position, not particularly directly on the street there, but in a location where we can protect it and defend it should any more flooding occur in the future. And then, of course, we're looking at once, the reservoir is up and running. We've had this project in the queue for many years, just could never slot it into a particular year to achieve it. Probably $1.6 million to actually refurbish the water tower once our reservoir is operational. And that'll be in the year 2025, if not sooner. That's just where I thought of it. So then taking all of our infrastructure needs into account, the sustainability of the service, what we currently supply, we have to look at the categories of how we charge people. So the administration costs are shared equally across the customer base by way of a service charge. If you go up to the farm rate or the script that's called in there. So when you look at the administration component, if everybody was to pick up their bill right now, they're going to notice on their bill they have a service charge. That service charge is constant for everybody, and it's the exact same rate for everybody, no matter how you slice it. Because whether you're purchasing mega amounts of water or very little, you're still using the same administrative time. You know, all of those things that go into forming the administrative rate. So we need to find in the year 2023, for example, recover costs for $143,000. And then you have the water production. So we have users that maybe don't use any of the distribution system in town, the water lines, but they have to pay portions of how we get our water to us, how we treat our water, how we store our water. So for example, we sell water to the ORNs of, you know, Rosedale and Langford. We sell water to High Life. So even though they get their water more directly and don't run their water through all of our systems, they pay a wholesale rate, and they pay towards the cost of producing and treating the water. So we have to come up with $1,400. When you look at water distribution now, these are the costs to send the water through all of the system. And it gets added to the wholesale rate to reflect the domestic rate. So everybody living directly or using the water directly in Niwa pays towards the distribution system, and we need to find $357,000 for that. And then if you just look at the sewer users now, based on who returns water to the sewer, we have to find $533,000 for that. And that also includes the lagoon, and it's based on who the water is used. So just to give you an idea of where we were at from a few years ago, because the rates did not actually go up. Our rates for 2022, and were the same since 2019, were a quarterly service charge of $19.75. And if you look at the domestic, every domestic user, for the first 450 cubic meters of water, you can charge $2.36 per cubic year. If you look at the wholesale rate, once you get 450 cubic meters of water, then you get charged a lesser rate of $1.32. Those that return water to the sewer get charged $1.40 to return it to the sewer. And then, of course, anybody purchasing raw water will get charged $2.72 cubic meter. The increases we're proposing based on incorporating all of those things into sustaining the utility and balancing the budget is suggesting that in 2023, we need to add a few dollars to this quarterly service charge for all of the increases in the administration fee. One of them in particular being the additions, well, trying to mentor for management position over the water plant. So we're just adding the costs for having extra staff over there and a succession plan. So that, even though it reads a 13.92% increase, doggedly, it isn't significant. Of course, $23 in 2024, and 2025 will be also $23. So zero increase on a service charge in 2025, 2.22% in 2024. If you look at the domestic water for first 450 cubic meters of water, we're proposing exactly the same rate of $2.36 in 2023, moving to $2.39 in 2024, and $2.41 in 2025. So just better than 3% over that three-year period. And if you extrapolate that to the five years, that actually there hasn't been an increase, a pretty decent increase, very minimal. If you look at the wholesale rates, we're going from $1.32 to $1.35, which is 2.27% increase, then to $1.37, which is another 1.48% increase, and then to $1.38, which is 0.73. So once again, very minimal increase based on the number of years in the past. Sewer is going to increase from $1.40 to $1.42, which is a 1.43% increase, then to $1.57, and it is a 10.56% increase. But I guess the only comment I would make on why it would be 10% in the year 2024, based on the county board standards that we had to implement putting into the last application. When you include all of your amortization of your capital assets into the plan, and at that point, our reservoir will be completed, and in more particular, in the sewer, our lagoon will be completed, we're going to be adding about 10 to $10,000 worth of infrastructure into the amortization, which is driving up the ability to have cost recovery and set aside money for future planning. So that's why the 10% increase in 2024 on the sewer side. Then back to $1.61, which is a 2.55% increase in 2025. As far as bulk water, just because of the way things flushed out in the rest of the rates, we're actually going to see a small decrease from $2.72 per cubic meter to $2.58 in 2023, rising to $2.60 in 2024, and then $2.64 in 2025. So give you an idea of what all those numbers mean. If you were a customer that had a minimum quarterly bill, you never used your full log of water, you're allowed 14 cubic meters on that particular water bill. Otherwise, you start getting into paying additional rates. So even if you use only 12, you still get the standard bill. You use six, you get the standard bill, but you can use up to 14. So under the current rates, you were paying a quarterly bill of $72.39. So looking at forward, in 2023, paying your service charge, paying your water charge, paying your sewer charge, you're going to see an increase of $3.02 a quarter, which is 4%. In 2024, you're going to see another increase of 4%, which is $2.97. And then in 2025, you're going to see a 1% increase, so 86 cents more. If I take that and extrapolate it now to a full year, what are you going to pay in a year? Right now, you're paying $289.56. You're going to pay in 2023, $12.12 more in Niwa. Another $12 more in 2024, and another $3 in 2025. So even though that's 9% over three years, if, like I say, if you go back to where the last rate was changed in 2019 and add four and a half, five years into that, makes less than 2% a year over that time period. Just a few additional examples. So the first one is kind of important, the 43.9 cubic meters per quarter. This is what we see on average in Niwa of users of our system. The average user uses 43.9 cubic meters of water per quarter in Niwa. So if they have a standard annual charge of $739.26 using that amount of water, they're going to see an increase of $14.51 next in 2023, another $33 in 2024, and another $10 in 2025. So still pretty decent. They are a larger user of water, so of course, they have to pay for quality and use. Another example would be somebody that uses 500 cubic meters of water per quarter. They'll pay an extra $57 in 2023, $360 in 2024, and $118 in 2025. So keeping in mind, once you head over the 450 cubic meter, you do get a drop in rates to go from the domestic rate to the wholesale rate. So the increases look a little different there. And then, of course, just the last one that might equate to somebody that might, you know, run a larger user. I don't, I didn't have an example in mind when this one came on here. You know, maybe a laundromat or a car wash or something. In fact, they probably use more water than this. An added $357 in 2023, and $1,380 in 2024, and $418 in 2025. So when you look at the percentages all across the board there, whether it be one, two, or even the highest of six, depending on which particular year you're looking at, for a three-year period, it's pretty decent. Also, the PUB likes you to take a look at what surrounds you. Look at all the other communities and where they're sitting at. And it's not to compare insofar as trying to be like them because you have to run a sustainable utility based on the infrastructure that you have in your community, at the age of it, and where you're at and where your position. So the thing I would note on this chart, we sit in the middle, we did last time. So using the average user, 43.9 cubic meters of water in Niwa, $753.77. We're right plunk in the middle. What is notable, though, that is going to be our proposed rate in 2023. If you look at the left-hand side there, sorry, you're going to note that all of the rates branded even stems back to 2018. They haven't had a rate change since then or put in an application. Everybody else runs up to 2022 rates, what we're now. We're proposing to still be in the middle at 2023. So I'm suggesting that anybody that's lower than us possibly is going to hike over top of us, and we probably would be positioned more in the top three of that chart as opposed to the 30% mark. Just to mention, we also have some special rates in our utility application. We sell large from municipality of Northside at Slanford and the rural municipality of Lonsdale. We have agreements with them by way of bylaw. They currently pay a rate of $1.84 per cubic meter. So as much as that sounds less than what people in town are paying, I cannot charge them for the cost of running water through our distribution system because they don't use the distribution system here. So their costs are basically the full rate per cubic meter for the producing of the water. And then I'm able to charge them a half of the distribution rate, which would equate to then the lines that actually go up to the pits and where they receive their water at the distribution points. So they're going to go to $1.86 per cubic meter in 2023, $1.88 in 2024, $1.90 in 2025. These changes result in about 3.23% on the three-year period. What I'll also note on sending water into the rural ORNs is in our agreement, when we do any significant upgrades to our infrastructure, they come on and they pay a proportionate amount of the cost of that infrastructure. So based on the fact that they get 150 cubic meters of water from us a day, it equates to 2.78% of our water supply out of the plant that we can produce. So they will be paying, for example, and they've been aware for two years now when we started to look at dealing with the reservoir, they will be paying 2.78% of the infrastructure cost for that. So anytime we have a big upgrade, because there is no other way for them to contribute to those costs, we do charge them an extra cost under the authority of the bylaw. Another thing we had to look at was lagoon tipping fees. We know there are people in town that might not be connected to the sewer system, but they do send their sewage there. So we have to be prepared to know that there are costs associated with building a lagoon and running a lagoon. So the current rates are yearly use of $60 for residential or per-use fee of $12. $240 for commercial or per-use of $48. So we're proposing the rates to go to a yearly fee of $71, which is $11 increase, and a per-use fee of $14.20, which is $2.20 cent increase per residential. And of course, I'm not going to read through all the rates here. The important part is at the bottom, the rates were last set. Because when you set the tipping rate, you don't normally set them year, year, year. You just set the rate and call that the rate. So the rates were last set in 2017. And the new rate now that I'm proposing reflects an increase of roughly 3% for the years 2018 to 2023, and mirrors the increase in the sewer rate for that same period exactly. And these rates will be in effect for 2023 to '25. So in summary, those rates reflect sufficient revenue to maintain safe water supply and promote conservation, takes into account the necessity to protect the environment and by not losing sight of the commitment to addressing wastewater concerns and infrastructure requirements, supports self-sufficient utility operations, incorporates funding to ensure capital utility requirements can be met in timely fashion. The rates are competitive with other jurisdictions, and they do provide us the capacity for future growth. Our recommendation is that counts to support the proposed water and sewer rates. We do have a bylaw requesting first read very shortly, and that we will be sharing the changes once you approve the bylaw, if you approve the bylaw, with the public. We'll do it through newsletters. We're going to share it with our large volume users to make sure that they are aware and communicate with them properly. And we're going to ask, because in an effort to save costs, that the Public Utilities Board consider a paper review process for this as opposed to the public hearing process and the big modification process that normally is involved, simply because the rates are very favorable and not significant increases. So just a little slide, and I guess I would just draw your attention to this and the importance of this being, you know, if you sell your water, everybody looks after it. If you give it away, nobody looks after it. Any questions? Is everybody awake?
There was a lot of information, Callie.
It was. Wow, you can read the vibe, her.
Yeah, that was very well presented. Thank you very much.
Well, if the PUB makes me go through the whole public here, I haven't even heard it yet.
I'm always amazed at big numbers, say, like $2 million for Mill Street for the lift station. I have $2 million for UWell. I mean, the numbers are getting just so big. But you have to have water, so. Okay, thank you, Callie. Okay, we're in, there's more bylaws, amended zoning bylaw, Callie.
So I briefly referenced this a little earlier. This is a zoning minute that would go hand and hand a little bit with the subdivision. This is an application by the town in Niwa, leaving the property down in the Addis Ababa in southwest 34415, 475 Main Street West. And this also follows under the development plan of... And this also follows on the development plan of the Planning District, bylaw 108. It's a map amendment to rezone land for future development and provide for future development on the land. As much as there is an instrumentation piece being purchased or repurchased by subdivision by Scout with Miller Murray in discussions with the landowner for being more financially feasible and reasonable, he's made the decision to actually rezone the entire property for 10, 15, 20 years. It was just a decision made. The idea is that we're going to amend from AR-O agricultural restricted space zone and AR-R agricultural restricted residential zone to RM1 residential multi-unit zone, I institutional zone, O open space zone, AR-R agricultural restricted residential zone, and CH commercial highway zone.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or any comments? Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution. Move by, Councilor Dr. Second thought, Deputy Mary.
First Councilor.
Oh, Dr. Councilor Dr. Being resolved, the bylaw number 3216-22, being a bylaw of the town Ni'wau to amend the town Ni'wau's zoning bylaw, number 3184-18, in relation to southwest 34-14-15 West, be now read for a first time. All in favor? Okay. And we are going to move forward with the water and sewer rates, the first reading.
So I won't speak anymore to that. It's basically the increases we showed.
Yeah. I think I will move ahead and if everybody's comfortable, that we'll move forward with the first reading. Move by, Councilor Dr. Seconded by Councilor Parrot. Being resolved, the bylaw number 3217-22, being a bylaw of the town Ni'wau to establish water and sewer rates for the town Ni'wau's utility for the years 2023 to 25, be now read for a first time. All in favor? Okay. And we are moving forward with vehicles for hire, first reading. Colleen?
So I didn't bring the paper I wanted to read from. I'll try and remember it all. So a couple of years ago, the town put in place a CACI bylaw. And at that particular time, that was what required for vehicles for hire. And I think it was the end of 2018, the province changed the legislation to actually, a piece of legislation called the local vehicles for hire legislation in there. So at that time, council looked at amending our CACI bylaw and upgrading it to a vehicle for hire bylaw. One of the most notable things within that legislation looked at the permitting and whatnot of any vehicle that might be for hire in Ni'wau, and also looking at requirement for certain types of vehicle to have drivers that had class four permitting on them. So this actually started in place two years ago through COVID as well, probably sat on the desk a little bit. And now we're looking to clean up the desk and get some of these things in place and I think in light of making sure we at least buy that legislation.
Okay, any questions, any comments?
I guess the only I would say is I've kind of researched a little bit and what I can see between what I have as a class five and what a class four would be would be medical. So it's basically, it's the same written exam, it's the same when you go out and take the driving exam, but they require that you take a medical. So if you're under 45, you're going to take it every five years. If you're under 65, 40, you're under 65 every three years. And if you're over 65, one year. And I think that from my point of view, I think that's a good thing if we're going to be dealing with the public and we're going to be transporting people around, you know, I think they want to make sure that they're safe and secure and that we've made sure that we've done our due diligence. So that's my position. So everybody's.
That doesn't necessarily apply to a person that would be, you know, a private organization that is, you know, let's say in the example you touched with Gray, you're taking with your clients, that will apply, and that is strictly in the case where you are hiring yourself under service to the public.
Yeah.
Maybe this levels the playing field across for anyone.
So by way of the legislation, this came right from the act, the vehicle of hire means a vehicle with manufacturer seating capacity designed for 10 or fewer occupants, including the driver, and used to transport passengers for compensation where the vehicle is hired for a single trip and the passenger controls the road travel or the destination includes taxi shuttles, magazines, handy transit, or any variation thereof. So for example, even I like picking up their workers, which is not really correct. Control of taking your clients, which is not really, kinboards, providing a shuttle, does not really. Ask me for compensation.
And the other thing special too is that people wonder about will there be a lack of licenses in the community. I think one of the wonderful things about being a rural community, I know how many class three licenses exist in this community just so that they can operate. Vehicles for work at a class three license will cover that because that is already above that four. So it's not hard to find a class three driver living in a community that can pick up those services as well.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Okay, anybody else? Okay, if not, we're going to move forward with the first reading. Move by. Seconded by Councilor Parrot. Being resolved, the bylaw number 3218-22, being a bylaw of the town Ni'wau to provide for licensing, controlling, regulating, and safety of local vehicles for hire in the town Ni'wau, be now read for a first time. All in favor? Okay, we are down to other business. Anybody have anything they want to discuss tonight? Want to talk about water or anything? No? Okay. How's America?
Well, so the danger of the flood in the Minnesotia community is over. What they need now is would be a lot of volunteers to come and help take the sandbags away. And I know Marvin Beaumont is organizing one group, but there are many groups that are going to be organized to help take the sandbags from where they were placed to protect the buildings back up to the municipal compound. So if you have your body, trucks, trailers, my suggestion is to either form a group and contact the CAO of the town of Minnesosa, 867-2727, or, you know, contact anybody that you know that lives in Minnesotia and get attached to one of their groups. There's an awful lot of sandbags to be removed from all the different properties. And I know Minnesotia could really appreciate and use a lot of help.
Okay, thank you, Murray. Anybody else, any comments? Okay, if not, we'll move forward with the adjournment. Move by, Councilor Parrot. Seconded by Councilor Constance Jones. Being resolved, the Council of Town Ni'wau do now adjourn the adjournment of the council at 8:20 PM. All in favor?